Okay, good evening and welcome to the Council and Committee of the Whole meeting for September 17th, 2024. Bienvenue et accueillir la conseilure pour 17 septembre. Before we get to the opening and land acknowledgement, I'd just like to take a moment to welcome our new member, Councilor Leroy Larrabee, to his first meeting of council. We're very happy to have you join us to look for contributions. With that, I would like to welcome Councilor Larrabee to read our land acknowledgement this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Je souhaite pas en avant main pour souligner l'important du territoire sur lequel nous sommes rassemblés. La municipalité du Népasing West reconnaît avec respect que nous sommes réunis sur une paire ancestrale des peuples Anishinaabe, sur les paroles traditionnelles des premières nations Népasing, Tamarami et Doki, désignées par le traité de Robinson Huron. Nous honorons leur lien historique avec le territoire et nous valorisons leur contribution considérable au façonnement et au renforcement de nos communautés. Ce faisant, nous réaffirmons notre engagement de responsabilité en bas des réconsidérations et de l'amélioration de notre compréhension des peuples autochtones locaux et de leur culture.
Merci. Heading into the meeting, I'd like to take any declarations of community interest? Seeing none, we do have an addendum this evening that you received this afternoon by email and placed the printed copies on your desk, Madam Clerk.
It is moved by Councilor Gagne and seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Be it resolved that the addendum for the meeting of council and committee of the whole held on September the 17th, 2024 will be adopted as presented.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Councilor Pelletier and seconded by Councilor Gagne. Be it resolved that the agenda for the council and committee of the whole meeting held on September the 17th, 2024 be adopted as presented.
Questions, comments? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you. Councilor Restoul, if I missed seeing your hand up, please speak out and let me know, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, and this evening we do have one petition that we are receiving, item 4.1. The information is in your packages and I will just, we will receive that and receive a staff report on it for our next meeting. Thank you. And with that, we'll move into committee of the whole. I've asked Councilor St. Louis to chair planning this evening, so I will pass the floor to him. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. So tonight, we have two items on the planning committee. Oops, sorry. We have 5.1.1, landscaping, official plan project introduction, and 5.1.2, follow-up regarding backyard chicken coop setbacks. We will begin with 5.1.1. And we will have a, we do have a delegation. And... Sorry, we're gonna have Ms. Debbie Van den Macker.
So close. Ah, darn it!
Macker, Van den Macker.
There you go.
There you go. And Mr. Ryan Lloyd here with us, who will play, as I presented.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to meet those that we haven't met. We have had a meeting on this with your PAC, so some of you are familiar with so far. Can I have the next slide, please, Molly? Just some project introductions. So as I was introduced, my name's Debbie Van den Macker. I'm the project manager on this project for us. We'll be doing the official plan and the zoning bylaw update for you. Rick Hunter, some of you may know, he's been around for a long, long time helping you with your land use planning. He is a senior associate at our firm, so anything historical that we have questions about how we came to be at the place that we're at, we go to for Rick. Ryan Lloyd, behind me, he is a planner that we work on the day-to-day of the project together. Jennifer Thompson, she still does your zoning bylaw updates, so she is our GIS technician and our mapping person. And then we've got David Riley and Sierra Horton from SGL. So they bring up our bilingual contingency and they also do a lot of the urban policy planning. So we specialize in rural and recreational planning, and SGL is specialist in urban planning, so together we will do the policies. Next slide, please. So the purpose of the project is to complete a comprehensive review of your official plan and so that it's consistent with the most recent provincial policy statement. As I'm sure you know, the PPS has gone through many iterations in the last couple of years. It has now been approved in the 2024 version, so we'll make sure that your OP is complying with that. And then we'll move on to a comprehensive zoning bylaw update to ensure conformity with your new official plan and to do any of the tweaks that need to be done. So in case you have, are not as familiar with the land use planning process, so the province is the controller of all things land use planning in Ontario. They tell municipalities through the provincial policy and the Planning Act how you need to conform with how you want to grow into the future. So our job is to make sure that your upper-level policies in your official plan conform with the PPS and then your zoning bylaw actually implements those policies. So that's sort of the hierarchy of order, how that goes. Next slide, please. So we started in April of this year. We have had our initial meeting with staff. We have come up and done a tour for a full day of the municipality. Not today, it was an earlier tour. We have prepared the public engagement plan. I'm going to go through that in a little bit more detail with you in a minute. We have completed our document review and analysis of the background planning information, so your policy documents that are in place, we've gone through those. We've done the pre-consultation meeting with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. That's really important, so all of the upper-tier agencies, they come on that meeting, they tell us all of their policy updates so that we have that information to use. Jen has been gathering the mapping information and data sets, so the province generally does that. We go onto their portal, download all the data sets, and then we start creating your schedules from there. We have presented to the project advisory committee, so the PAC, in August to review that public engagement plan and an issues identification report, which I'll talk a little bit more about. And then today, we had a lovely working session with staff where I think we solved all of the problems of the world, including some of your planning issues moving forward, so we'll make sure that all of that information goes into the first draft. Next slide, please. So our draft engagement plan, so this is essentially where we just lay out formally how we want to engage your residents. It's a very brief plan in terms of the goals and the objectives, how we go about consulting everybody with this. We like to be open and transparent, make sure everybody feels heard, they have all of the opportunity that they want to engage in this process. Next slide, please. So these are the consultation touchpoints that we have, and this is just to give you an idea. Everywhere that there is a D or an M mark, that's a deliverable or a meeting where we will touch. That's the entire project schedule, where we will go out to individual stakeholder groups. We will go out to the public, we will have First Nation meetings. So this is just to show you that at all of these key points along this process, we will be reaching out and engaging the public. Yes, please. So in September, the end of this month, we're probably going to be the first week or two of October, but we'll populate the project website. This is where we want to drive sort of online traffic. This will be a repository of all of the documents for the project. They can see the schedule, they can subscribe, so they get project updates electronically. February and March, we're going to come back and we're going to do some open houses and public meetings. So to use our time as effectively as we can when we're physically here, we will make sure that we do a series of stakeholder meetings and then open houses. So we're going to be here, and then we're going to do two more in more rural areas to make sure that we capture as much of the in-person population as we can. And then in December, we'll have another public meeting where we'll present the draft documents. So right now, we are drafting the drafts and we'll present those in December. And then again, in December, we'll update the project webpage so that people can see what they have said. We've recognized through all of the work we do with the public, they need to go somewhere where they see what they have told us. They feel recognized, they know that we have considered what they have said and how we responded to it, so we will update that on the webpage as well. And then we aim to be done April 2026 with the final statutory public meeting. That's part of the process that we need to go through. Next, please. So First Nations consultation and engagement. A formal engagement communication will end September 6th. So in-person visits and customized engagement will be undertaken by Doki's First Nation and Népasing First Nation with the project team to ensure these rights holders are engaged in the project throughout. We actually have virtual meetings set up next week and hopefully with the second in the next week or two, and we'll follow up with in-person visits as we can make schedule smash. We hope that we could have done that today, but it just didn't work, so. Next, please. So our draft issues identification report, as I said, this was presented to PAC, and this is where we basically document what we know you want to see in the upcoming documents. So the issues that have been identified going forward with, you know, existing campgrounds and agricultural lands, all of those things. We put this in this identification report so that we make sure when the final product comes out, it's a checklist of yes, we have identified this, yes, we have dealt with it, and just make sure that what we've learned at the beginning of this process through the 18 months of it doesn't get lost anywhere. So we will finalize that with any updates from our working session today, any comments that you may have that we can add to that, and then we will finalize it. Next, please. So again, this is a project schedule. So the background review, that'll happen April to this month of this year. The first draft of the official plan and public project introduction is from now until next year, September. And then we'll get into the zoning bylaw. So the official plan, as I said earlier, that's the overriding policy document. It tells us the vision and the overriding policies of how you want to grow into the future, and then we can get into the details of how the zoning bylaw implements those policies. We will refine that and finalize the official plan and the zoning bylaw from January to April 2026, and then hopefully, April 2026, you have a shiny set of new policy documents. Next slide. These are project contacts in case you need anybody or you have questions, you want to follow up later or today, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Great, thank you, Ms. Van den Macker. I'll open up the floor to anybody who has any questions? Comments? Madam Mayor?
I just wanted to ask a question in regards to First Nations consultation and engagement. As we heard in our opening acknowledgement, our municipality also touches on land of Tamarami First Nation, and although they're not specifically, you know, overly engaged within the community because they're distanced from us, I think that it might be important to recognize that part of our landmass is part of that First Nation as well. So where Doki and Népasing, I think we see more residents and more interaction because of their proximity to us. I think it's important to recognize that we also sit on land of Tamarami First Nation as well.
We will reach out, thank you for that.
Secondly, I just wanted to, when I look at the current engagement events timeline slide there, you have the two things in December 2024. And we're along that line, so we would need to adopt the official plan as a council, and once that is adopted, then the revisions to the zoning bylaw will begin after that. Like, I'm just a little concerned about the timeline at that end or, you know, like that, from December to April, that's a lot to get done as far as the zoning bylaw changes as well, because we'd like, obviously, like to see this wrapped up during our term of council, and our term does end October of 2026, so.
From doing these previously, a lot of the information that we need in order to do the zoning bylaw actually comes out during the official plan process. So when you're talking to your residents, they don't really differentiate between the two things. They have concerns, and we carry them forward to both. So the extended timeline for the official plan is because there's a lot of consultations that happens, and that tends to be very time-intensive. And so also the zoning bylaw plans keep to your zoning bylaw in 2014, and so we're very familiar. And we already know that, we discussed that with staff, that we like the format and those kind of things. So it's a less intensive process than the official plan right now. So that's why the schedule's set up that way.
And I'm sorry, when is the project website expected to go live?
Mid-October.
And there will be an option for residents to subscribe to updates as they come through and be informed of specific consultation meetings or open houses, you know, as look back at feedback. So if somebody is particularly interested in following this process, there's a mechanism for them to receive kind of a constant stream of communication on the process.
Yeah, absolutely. There'll be two forms, you know, engagement buttons. So one is to subscribe so that when we send out updates about the project, when we send out invitations to public meetings, that will go out to what forms a mailing list. The other one is if they have comments, so they can just go online to the project website at any point and provide a comment. So if it occurs to them, you know, midway between two public meetings, they can always send us that feedback. So we'll make sure that residents understand that while waiting up.
Okay, and will our members of council be automatically added to that list or do we need to go on and subscribe ourselves?
As you say that, if you all nod your heads, then we can happily add you to the list. Yes. We don't do that typically because, you know, you can't send out email until people agree to do it, but we will take that as your agreement. So you will form the beginning of our list.
I believe I see unanimous consent around.
Perfect.
Those are my questions, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Anyone else with any questions?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to understand a bit, but how do we as councillors fit into this process in terms of feedback?
Sure. At any point, we will come back to it strategic spots. We do our best to formalize those touchpoints, so every public meeting you will obviously be invited to. Whenever we have PAC meetings, you will be advised as well. When an issue comes up, we can certainly make reports back to council, but typically, we just hope that you become involved in this process throughout as any other sort of stakeholder would, so that you are apprised of the process itself, and then if you've got questions. It works a lot better when people are in it and it's less formalized. So we can have the conversation, so with your concerns, you don't have to sit there and write a big formal letter or have a formal response. You can simply reach out to the project team, so hopefully that you're engaged throughout.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
I'd just like to ask a follow-up question to Councilor Federer. So in the April 26, 2026 statutory public meeting, final public meeting, and then sometime after that, April 2026, it would come to council to be adopted? Is that, like, it's something that is approved by council?
That final public meeting is a council meeting.
Okay, and so we would be voting on the official plan at that point? And will it come to council for review before that, where if council had any feedback or wasn't comfortable with any sections?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Comments, no? Okay, so I would like to thank you, Ms. Van den Macker, for providing us that information in a very nice presentation, and we look forward for the next year and a half, definitely.
Thank you, Ms. Ewa. Thank you very much.
So our second item on the committee, the planning committee, is 5.1.2, follow-up regarding backyard chicken coop setbacks. So we've been discussing the backyard chicken coop bylaw for quite some time. However, keep in mind, this discussion is only about the setbacks, not about anything else. And I will pass it to... Okay, to Samantha, our planner, sorry, to Ms. Willoughby, to provide us with the information that they have for us.
Thank you. This memo is hopefully quite brief. Essentially, we've already been in discussions about a lot of the regulations pertaining to backyard chickens. At the previous discussion where we went through a lot of the regulatory and administrative decisions that would form our bylaw, it was identified that we'd like to further look into the opportunities for different setbacks. And so this report outlines what the setbacks currently are for accessory structures under our zoning bylaw, if we were to keep chicken coops under those regulations, and then an option which would be specific setbacks that would pertain only to our chicken coops. I will note that in this, I do say hen enclosure. So generally, we have a chicken coop, which is the actual roof section, and then a chicken run, which is usually the chicken wire more outdoor section. So these would apply to all of that hen enclosure. And I will leave it at that if anyone has any questions. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Questions or comments from our councillor?
Monsieur Ewbe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The setbacks would, could be different from rural to living in the urban area of the city. So, and this is what we're looking to set, I guess, is the setback, but it could be different. One rule, because in rural areas, you have more room, so you could set the setback quite farther from the back line than would be for urban here. So this is what we're looking at, right?
Through you, Mr. Chair. This, what I've written here and proposed, would apply all across the board. I do recognize that our current accessory structure regulations do differ depending on if it's a rural location. The minimum setback of three meters from all property lines does align with our setback requirements for the rural zones. So there wouldn't be an increase in setbacks for the property lines in our rural residential zones. This would only technically be an increase in all the other zones. We can look at going to an opportunity where there's different setbacks for rural versus urban. If that is something that council wishes to pursue, I would recommend that we either tie it to zone or tie it to lot area, similarly to how we've tied the number of chickens to specific lot areas.
Thank you.
Because I know, excuse me, I know for, right now, for the city, the setbacks are, what is it, four feet from the line? And in rural areas, it's 10 feet. So we could be looking at something similar to this, to this bylaw. But that way, because in the, in the area, it's a lot, the lots are closer, so we'd have to, we couldn't put it at the, at the three meters because it would be quite challenging for the ones that do have chickens in town here. I think this is something council should address. Thank you.
Any conseillerie?
Thank you.
Excuse me.
I really like option one after reading it there. It has the inclusion of the well and 18 meters high water mark and three meters from all property lines. I don't know the difference between rural or urban. If you're three meters, urban, I think, would be the bigger concern because people are closer. Rural, if you're three meters away, you're still probably a good distance away from your rural neighbor, so. I'd like to just see something simple as option one there, kind of just state something, nothing too crazy. People don't have to go look and find out how far they have to be depending which zone they are. Just a minimum of three meters from all property lines.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any comments or questions? So I believe what we're looking at is from us here at council, correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking at given direction on whether we should proceed with option one and/or option two. Conseillerie Larrabee would like, I believe, to see something added that would have something that would include urban area, correct?
That is correct.
Conseillerie Nico?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Is there an option for no option, just let them put them where they want? Because I don't think there's going to be a rush for people in town to put these in their front yards. Is that not possible? Option one, two, and then three, which is just leave it?
So right now, we only have two options, which is option one and option two is what we're looking at, discussing and voting on, is what I anticipate. So the other option, no, is not there, but it's something that we can look at. Madam Mayor?
Well, I would think just as a minimum from the perspective of good planning, you would want to at least respect the zoning bylaws that would apply to any accessory structure, because otherwise you're saying like, there's no setback. Where on every other building, whether it's a shed or, I don't know what else, a garage or whatever, it has to be setback a certain amount from the property lines. So option two keeps the setbacks consistent with every other accessory structure that would be built. And to say that it would have no setbacks... And to say that it would have no setbacks, in my opinion, wouldn't be like good from an overall planning policy perspective. My tape on it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else with any comments or? Conseiller Reston?
Thank you for you, Mr. Chair. Hopefully, my audio is okay for the room. Just, I think I agree with councillor Revard in terms of having option one. I know, again, going back to speaking with residents in the urban area, I think option number two being one meter away from their lot line is a little bit close for, you know, chickens. And I'm thinking it's a little bit different having a shed rather than livestock, having the same dimensions for lot lines. I think it makes a significant difference. So I know we're probably not voting, but if we're just looking for comments, I think I'd probably lean towards option one and what's outlined there. Thank you.
Thank you. Conseiller Abbi?
Yeah, thank you. The other thing that I forgot to mention earlier was I really like how option one states shall not be located in the front yard. And option two, it leaves it open. I'm thinking in town, if everyone starts having them in the front yard, it would look a little different when you're driving through our urban center. So I really like that aspect as well of option one. The exterior side yard, I forget what that is, interior and exterior. I remember, I know of it, but if you could explain it.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Exterior side yard, so that is for on a corner lot. The shortest one is your front yard, and then the longer one that also is against a road would be your exterior side yard. And just to clarify your earlier comment, so option one provides that the enclosure is not located in the front or exterior side yard. So essentially, that would be anywhere between the road and the side of the house. Our current zoning bylaw regulations for accessory structures do not permit accessory structures in the required front or exterior side yard, which sounds very similar. But essentially, if your house was built, let's say, eight meters back from the front yard, from the front property line, and the setback requirement was only six meters, you could put that accessory structure in the two feet that exist there. So that's what that difference is.
Thank you.
Conseiller Abbi? Thank you, Mr. Chair. After reading these options, I kind of agree with option one also. I like the idea of fifteen meters from the well, which is, that's a must, and eighteen meters from the high water. Yeah, I like that. Go for it. Option one.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments or? Okay, so again, I don't think we're voting. I believe what we're doing is giving direction, correct me if I'm wrong, to staff to proceed with, whether it's option one or two. So with a show of hands, who would prefer option one? And that's unanimous, or, oh, sorry, unanimous, but that is voted in. So we will direct staff to go with the option one and we'll move forward. Thank you. And I believe that's for now for planning.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, councillor St. Louis. We will move on to five point two, which is our public works committee. And I will pass the floor to our chair, councillor Goni.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we have two items on the agenda. First is an update of the capital work update, so I'll pass it on to Miss Henning to kind of give us a summary of where we're at at this moment. Thank you.
Okay, so three things to share. Construction is moving along really well this summer. I'm actually, I've been kind of doing a review this week of where we're at with everything, and I'm really pleased with the progress that's been made. And our staff has been working really hard, so I just want to acknowledge them and acknowledge our contractors, who have been putting in some really great work this summer. So Eugene Road Bridge Replacement is finally underway. That's expected to be wrapping up November fifth. We do have our greater operators doing some extra maintenance on the detour routes out that way to make sure that the extra traffic is not destroying our roads. So does anyone, do you want me to just move on through all of them and do questions at the end, or?
Okay, we can ask questions as we, if there are any questions by councillors regarding Eugene Grid.
Madam Mayor?
When is the resurfacing on that project expected to happen? Is that going to be a twenty-twenty-six project for the resurfacing?
It'll be next year, twenty twenty-five.
Oh, sorry. I lost a year there. I'm sorry. I apologize.
A little bit. Yeah, so next year, yes. Yeah, we're getting too late in the season to get a good resurfacing if we do it now, so.
Thank you. I'll see if I can.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I just have an idea when that would be, in twenty-twenty-five?
We haven't scheduled for that yet, but our goal would be to get it early in the construction season.
And what is that?
So after, typically after the May long weekend.
Okay.
Because you need temperatures to be warm enough, so that's typically the after the May long weekend.
Okay. Thank you. I'll see if I can.
I'm just wondering, I asked a question before, the calcium that we put on the road. Is that, could that affect the oil that we're going to put on that road?
Yes, we looked into that in, yes. But that's why we're hoping to do the surface treatment early in the season, so that we won't, we wouldn't be cooking calcium on and then doing surface treatment.
So the calcium from this year would?
No, but that won't be an issue. Yeah, that's, it's far enough out that that won't be an issue. We just wouldn't want to be applying next spring and then resurfacing right after that.
Because the base, I think, is still good, so you're not going to add any gravel. You're just going to pulverize everything, arrest it, and do it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Perfect.
Okay, so Front Street, I understand Front Street is frustrating. We have a lot of traffic. But that is moving along. We are looking at completion by October thirtieth, hopefully sooner. This week, they've been doing the manholes in the center lane. Once that's complete, they will be completing the curb on the south side of the highway. And then after that, we will be paving. The contractor is considering doing the paving work at night. However, we can't really guarantee that at this time, because it'll be temperature dependent. And this time of year, the nights get a lot cooler. You need warmer weather to get a good asphalt product on the road. So if we get this beautiful weather that we've got, if this continues, then we may luck out and be able to get some of that paving work done at night. But unfortunately, if not, it will have to happen during the day. But it shouldn't take long to get in there and get that paved, and then we'll be done.
Any questions by councillors? Yes, Conseiller Abbi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just noticed that if you're going, I'd say it would be ninety percent of the curbs have been done on the, that'd be the north side. Yeah, so is it, are they going to complete all the curbs? I've had a few people ask questions, like, why wouldn't they do all of them?
So there are sections where the curb is actually still in good condition. So where the curb is still in good condition, we're not replacing that curb. So that's just a, it's a cost savings for the municipality. We're not going to tear up curb. This still has left some lifespan left. We're just working on doing a curb that is ready to be done.
Sorry, just follow up. I also got the question about the sidewalks. Would it be the same answer for that?
Yeah, same answer for that.
The one thing that I thought was, because you know, at the intersections, now they've put those safety grates.
Oh, those, yes, we will be adding the...
Yeah, so there's one or two that didn't get added there, so I was wondering if that would?
The plates, like?
Yeah, where they didn't do the, where it connects to the intersection. So like, they didn't put in a new sidewalk there, so then we don't get a safety grate there, so.
So I can look into that if they're supposed to happen at, if we're doing that at every intersection or just the ones where we replace the sidewalk? Yeah, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head if we're doing them everywhere. But technically, if we don't replace the sidewalk, we don't have to do it. But if we do replace the sidewalk, they do have to go in. It's part of the accessibility. So that's why we would put them in versus not. But I think that they are happening in all of them, and I'll have to confirm that for you.
Any other questions? Madam Mayor?
Just out of interest, what's the temperature threshold that you're looking for for the laying of asphalt?
That's a very technical question that...
I'm sorry. I'm just interested, because it's not...
Honestly, I probably don't think I could speak to this off the top of my head, because I'm not an expert on the temperature, but I know you wouldn't want it, you don't want it really warm. Like, you don't want a day over thirty degrees, but anywhere, once you start getting lower than fifteen degrees, so.
Thank you. And I just want to say, like, I think the, actually getting the curb drains done is going to be fantastic, because I know that, I've got from the experience driving the highway in the spring, when there's lots of water and inadvertently giving pedestrians showers because of the standing water on the road. And so I think it's, I think it's really going to improve the experience both for drivers and pedestrians along Front Street, Highway seventeen.
Madam Mayor, I'll see if I can.
This question is probably for Mr. Bappo. I'm just wondering, the cost of that project, are we still the ten percent?
Yes, yes, on, most of it would be on the surface and the actual road part would be ten percent, yeah. And I guess Liz would know more on that, but we're on budget?
We are on budget, yes.
Questions? Next item, please.
So the next one on here is John and King Street. I think you probably see that John Street is done. They are finishing up King Street, and that should be completed October eleventh. Now, the second section of this, I'll just tie these two together, so the King, King Street, down to Ethel and then Ethel. We have decided that that work is going to commence in the spring, because at this point, starting that second contract, it's, they're not going to be able to get very much done. So we've actually spoke with the contractor and come to an agreement that that work will be starting next, next spring.
Any questions for the John and King Street project? Madam Mayor?
When we, when we do a delay like that to the following season, is there cost impact for the municipality?
So, yes, in theory, there could be, but we have spoke with the contractor. So because we're doing a bio-mutual agreement, there isn't. And we are, the contractor will actually be ordering the pipe, because there is, for material costs, there is a risk that material cost can go up next year. So the pipe for the job is going to be ordered by the contractor now, so that they'll be locking in the prices for this year. So, yes, we will be risking some potential increase in costs for granular and asphalt. We don't know what the market's going to do next year, but we're not overly concerned that it's going to be a huge impact to the project cost. And there's other costs that we're saving, not having to mobilize and demobilize before winter, so.
And the Ethel, Ethel Street portion of that goes, like, is it going around the corner next year or just to Ethel?
No, it's going around the corner, so it would be going to the next block.
So we're going?
Just one block of Ethel.
From Market to Ethel, and then Ethel from King?
To Main.
To Main?
Yes.
And then the follow, we still have?
And we've got, yes.
Ethel on twenty-twenty-six?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other questions? Okay, can we move on?
Okay, so Levac... The Levac Road culvert, you'll see that's down to one lane in that area now. I know it kind of sat for a while, and there's probably some questions about what, why, why there was break in the construction there. So what happened during this replacement? Once the new culvert went in, and it's the same size as the previous culvert, it was determined that the banks are actually really steep there. So if the guide rail were to have gone back up as it was, then we'd be putting up guide rail in a kind of substandard. It would be too close to the edge of the embankment, and then really, it's not very functional. So the solution to that is that we did add an extension to the culvert, so that we can get a proper side slope on the one side. So the reason why there's been a delay on that project is because we were waiting for the manufacture of that extension. Now, that's in the process right now of being installed, and the work should be completed, guide rail backup, and it repaved by September twenty-seventh.
Any questions for the Levac Road culvert?
Madam Mayor? I'm sorry, I always have questions. So will the change in scope in that project result in an increase in cost? Because, of course, there's a new piece of culvert and then additional labor involved in doing that, so.
Yes, there is a cost increase there, but we looked at our overall budget prior to determining if we were going to go forward with this, and there is room in the budget to accommodate that cost. And we did have contingency in the project as well, so that helps keep that unexpected cost.
Madam Mayor, any other questions? I'll see if I can.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to know if anything needed done to prove the signage. I know that, I mean, in that time period, that one month time period, there was a problem with speeding, especially, it's helped a lot since it's been reduced to one lane, because now people have no choice but to slow down. But people were driving quite fast over it, and I just found, I just felt that maybe we could increase the signage a bit, warning signs, to make sure they stay up or permanently implanted and ground.
So I know there was some signs that did get knocked down the weekend of the rodeo inferno. There was a lot more traffic and some signs did get knocked down. And the contractor was out there on the Monday morning and did put those signs back up. In terms of additional signage, I mean, I can always speak with the contractor about that, but ultimately, we typically, if they are putting up signage that is within book seven, which is like the regulations, we typically don't try to govern that, because then the municipality is taking on the liability instead of the contractor there. But I can absolutely ask them to put more signage up.
Well, from my experience, I mean, I drive past there almost every day, and the construction warning signs were down for, not just a few days, they were down for weeks, like, a long, long periods of time. The one near Arcane Road was down for a long time. I just find that, you know, a seventy kilometer an hour road going down to twenty at the site of the bridge is kind of sudden. So that's my only feedback at this time. I just feel that the problem with speed was mainly related to the fact that there was no warning that there was construction.
There was a...
Speed reduction.
So there was a sign a kilometer in advance advising that you'd be entering a construction zone. So there was a kilometer of warning, and that was prior to the help. And, yeah, if we're not made aware the signs are down, then it's hard for us to be out there realizing that they're down. So we'd appreciate you knowing that. Like, if you notice the sign down, please let us know.
All right, thank you. Thank you. I'll see if I can. Any other questions? You can move on.
Okay. So surface treatment, Severn and Leblanc Road has been completed. Questions on?
Any questions or comments by councillors? Looks good. I will just make a comment. I did ask Miss Henning in regards to like, what's the process? How long does it take if you've driven down there? There's still a bit of gravel on the road. So Miss Henning will come back to us at our next report, just to let us know, like, did you get?
Oh, I can give you an answer on that. Yeah, so it does take, it will take several months. It depends on how much traffic is driving on the road. So in the areas where there is more traffic, where there's homes, you're probably starting to see less of that. And in the area where there is less traffic, then it just takes time for the traffic to compact the surface treatment, because basically, it's like a chip and tar, right? So it's compacted. And that's why we typically only do this on roads that are over a certain volume. We wouldn't be doing surface treatment on low-volume roads, because it would just, it would never compact. You need that traffic to compact it.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll see you.
Bye, thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to reply a little bit to your, the winter is coming soon. Because that's what I do, I tend to want to flatten it out. I don't know, that's something that we should, yeah, just to mention to people who are driving, right?
I mean, it, it will naturally, just as people drive, that will, it will take care of itself. So I don't, I don't think we need to specifically designate for anyone to drive in certain areas.
Council, council, see you later, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to reply a little bit to your, the winter is coming soon. The snow pile will be taking care of the remaining gravel on the road. Because this is what we, this is what we have in, in our area, chip and tar.
Thank you, we'll see that, and be, any other questions? Good, next item, please.
Okay, so brushing and ditching, we have the majority of our brushing and ditching wrapped up. There's still a little bit happening on Stewart Road and Dutresac Road, which will be probably more visible because that's a well-traveled road, but we've been working on Dutresac Road for the past, I think this will be the third year. And we'll be completing Dutresac Road this year, so everything should be finished by November eighth.
Any questions for brushing and ditching, Mr. Mayor?
But the only question I have is in regards to Doki's. Because generally, we have been working on five kilometers of brushing and ditching. And then the year after that portion gets new granular. So did that, so has the five kilometers that was brushed and ditched last year been done on Doki's already as well?
Yes, we actually had that completed early in the spring because we were trying to complete it prior to the powwow.
Yes, that's awesome, thank you very much.
Questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, I will just say, and, I'm sorry, and the people on Doki's, because I did attend the powwow, I had several comments from people on the condition of the road. They, they were very pleased and so it's, it's really making a difference for the community. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you very much and a great job to you, Ms. Henning, and all Public Works and the contractors. Like, it's a lot of projects that's being done in a, in a short time and I think we're going to get ahead of this. And let's not forget, the Governor Express in Toronto still rolls at the moment, so. So we'll move on to the next item, which is the petition for the traffic issues improved on the main King Street. So I'll pass it on to you, Ms. Henning. I, we, we should have all read the report or the recommendation, I should say. So I don't know if you have, want to add something verbally before I open it up for questions.
So I don't, I don't really have anything to add to this. We'd like to start with questions, I'm fine with that.
Perfect, so I'll open it up for any questions in regards to the request. Any councilors? Questions? I'll see you.
Thank you to you. Not a question, more of a comment that I agree with the recommendation. It would cause more issues, I think, than it would solve, especially if you're coming on King across the tracks and then you want to go downtown, but you can't because it's only one way. So you have to turn onto Front Street and turn left by Tim Horns to the chip stands without a turn in lane. I don't know, I think it's just a disaster waiting to happen there. The idea may seem great to some people, but when you think of how you would implement it, I don't think it's feasible in our municipality, so thanks for the recommendation.
Okay, thank you, councilor. Councilor Reston?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I, I want to just agree with, again, with Council Rebar, not to ride his coattails all night here, but I agree with the recommendations. I appreciate the work that staff put into looking at all the different scenarios and the impacts and how it may impact the traffic flow and safety concerns in the downtown area. You know, it's not included in this report, but I, I just had in my mind when I was thinking of this as well, if all the parking's on one side of the street, it might cause some safety issues in terms of crossing the street. Because for those businesses who are on the, you know, roadway part of this one-way street, we see some of the challenges in downtown right now where people don't necessarily walk to the corners and the crossways to go across. They kind of jump across right in the middle of streets. So, you know, just another thing to consider. But again, I appreciate the, the work that's been put into the report. And I, and I agree with the recommendation.
Thank you, councilor Reston. Councilor Nettie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also agree with the recommendation that was brought forward. I don't think backing up on, on the street is a very good idea because they're going to be sideways, so, no. And I kind of like those new stop signs on Main. It's, it is a safety issue that you always have a hard time moving forward because you've got the chip stand, you've got the traffic. With no stop sign there, you know if you're the first one to put a stop, you proceed. So I, I'm with the recommendation of, of our staff on this.
Thank you, councilor Nettie. Any other questions, comments? More questions?
So I'll just make my comment before we end this. I do agree, there, there's a lot of the parking available downtown and we do have open parking lots available. And I know the one beside Town Hall here is almost always empty most of the time, so I don't think there is a parking issue. And I think there are maybe safety issues in terms of backing up into the road. We don't have the volume of traffic that the big cities have, so anyways, on my side too, I agree with the recommendation and thank you very much for that information. Do we need to?
Yeah, I would just like to see.
Could we see, show hands, who's in favor of the recommendation of not looking at the one-way street in the downtown, please? Thank you very much.
All right, and.
Yeah, go ahead.
I should just point out about, you mentioned stop signs. Those are, have been put up temporarily by council during the construction. So just keep in mind, those are temporary stop signs.
Perfect, thank you, Ms. Henning. And that concludes the Public Works Committee, so back to you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. We have no items under the Services Committee this evening, so we will move to five points four, which is our water committee. Pass the floor to Councilor Pedersen, our chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'll pass it on right away to Mr. May for to give us maybe a quick update on this something that was done this summer.
Thank you. First of all, I was asked to attend because you wanted a history on the burn water treatment systems. And I will start off with trying to get you to get an appreciation of what we're trying to achieve. And that is, we tried to get the level of manganese down to twenty micrograms per liter. So to get an appreciation of what twenty micrograms is, I looked up and the, the mass of a grain of salt, of one table of salt, is sixty micrograms. So what we're trying to achieve is a concentration of once, one-third of a salt, sorry.
A grain.
A grain of salt, thank you. First of all, manganese and salt are approximately the same atomic weight. So that means they're comparable in size. And so one grain of salt, you can appreciate it to be about the same weight of manganese of that same size. So Ms. Henning fortunately has a one-liter bottle right here. So what we want to have is one grain of manganese, which is the size of one grain of salt, dissolved in three of these bottles. And that's an appreciation of the concentration of manganese we're trying to achieve with the drinking water. Okay, and twenty micrograms is the, the objective that we're trying to achieve. Because at that concentration, it's not visible and it's not an aesthetic issue with, with, with people. And manganese is also not a, a health risk in these concentrations. So going, so let's go back a bit with the history. And you may have some bullets in the memo that was provided, that was provided. Excuse me. I was able to confirm with, with a former operator who was working back then that, that the plant, the existing burner plant was constructed and built in around nineteen seventy-four timeframe. And in about the nineteen seventy-six timeframe is when they were starting to have to remove manganese from the, from the drinking water system. And the technology that was used from nineteen seventy-six onward was using chlorine dioxide. Chlorine dioxide is an oxidizing agent. And the, the procedure is, is to oxidize or have this chemical react with manganese, which creates a manganese oxide, which is a particle which we can then now settle out and filter out. And that's how we reduce the concentrations of manganese. And from nineteen seventy-six to about twenty, to the year twenty twenty, we're using chlorine dioxide, we were using chlorine dioxide for the manganese removal process. And when the concentration of manganese in the raw water is high, we use more chemical. And when it's lower, of course, we can cut down. The effects of using chlorine dioxide is created byproducts called chlorides and chlorates. And the Ministry of the Environment came up with restrictions in the, around the two thousand and seventeen timeframe. So chlorides and chlorates became a regulatory parameter that we had to monitor and keep a low, a certain amount. So that created a problem for us, the municipality, to use limited amount of chlorine dioxide to not create these byproducts. And as a result of that, we ended up having inadequate treatment for the, for the amount of manganese we wanted to take out. And as a result of that, we ended up with having discolored water going into the community. And so those challenges, that, that was taking place in the year of twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, where we were making efforts to adapt to the new regulations, to use less chemical in order to stay compliant with these byproducts that were being made. So after twenty eighteen, I'm sorry, let me go back. I jumped ahead and not following. If you go back a little further, in, in the year two thousand and fifteen, we were doing repairs to the treatment plant. And that required a two-day shutdown. Most of the shutdowns for the maintenance of the, of the plant, we would have to shut the plant down, do the maintenance and start the plant up while having adequate amounts of water in the water tower to continue feeding water to the, to the community. So there was lots of effort required to, to, to plan work and get it done within a couple of hours so we don't lose water to the community. Unfortunately, the work that had to be done in the year twenty fifteen required two days and we had no choice but to truck water from Sturgeon Falls to Burner because it couldn't be done in less than, in less than two days. And so that's one of the issues, this plant being as old as fifty years old, is that it lacks redundancy. Unlike the Sturgeon Falls plant, there is double and triple redundancies. We have the ability to run half the plant or a third of the plant and yet may do the maintenance without sacrificing any risk to not providing water to the community. Whereas with the burner plant, it's shut her down, get it fixed and start back up as quickly as possible. And some of the repairs that we have to do in Burner require multiple shutdowns because we cannot, we cannot complete it with one shutdown. For example, if we had to go and change the filters, the filter media in the plant, we, we couldn't access it because of the size of the access hatch. So we had to shut the plant down, install an access plant, access hatch, and then start the plant back up. And then the next opportunity, we shut the plant down again, continue the work and then start it back up. So those are the challenges that we have with a plant that's, with the current plant that we have. And that's, that started the, the ball rolling with what kind of alternate plant or what, what alternatives do we have? In the meantime, in the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, the regulations changed, which is providing the challenge for how we could remove the manganese. So the community is seeing the dirty water. They're not seeing the challenges of the, the lack of redundancy for the plant. So around the two thousand and nineteen timeframe, we had made some changes to the treatment process where we're using a different chemical called potassium permanganate. And this chemical does not generate the chlorides and chlorates. So we're able to use adequate amount of this chemical to achieve the, the manganese removal. So carrying on, we really not had significant issues from year twenty twenty when we're starting using this other chemical today. I believe there is social media communications when people have experiences of dirty water and that causes a lot of negative feedback in communications. People remembering the twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen timeframe when we were not able to achieve it, the, the, the manganese removal that we wanted to. And everybody seems to be referring back to those days to, to say how inadequate the treatment is at, at the burner plant. But if I, we, we did some digging around and I believe there's less than twenty complaints over the last four years since we've been using the permanganate. So that's where we are today. We're, we're achieving adequate manganese removal with the, with the chemicals that we're using. And we are, we have made some modifications to the plant to keep it operational. And so the next steps that we were doing this time period was to find the preferred solution for the, the age of the plant. Do we, do we build a new plant to replace the existing plant? Or do we build a new plant at another lake? Or do we use well water? Or do we transport water from Sturgeon Falls to the burner? And so the preferred choice turns out to be hauling the water, pumping the water from Sturgeon Falls to the burner. And we did the studies, the engineering firm did the background studies through the EA process to confirm or rule out that the other options were not adequate or were not preferred. And so we have council's support at that time to continue on with the, with the efforts to get water from Sturgeon to, to Burner. Because of a lot of complaints that we received this year, this, at the start of this summer, we tried to conduct the study and we, we contacted six homes of people that called in to complain about dirty water. And we got them to volunteer to agree to, for us to sample weekly at their site, at their, at their homes. And the table that you have received shows the results of those samples, of the sampling that we've done. And the, anecdotally, the operators, when they sampled, it's the same information that we tell homeowners if they're, they're sampling on the coal water line. And they did not, the operators, when they've been sampling, did not see dirty water most of the time. And the times that they did see dirty water, the instructions we tell the people is run the coal water line for a couple of minutes and it clears, and that's what they've been observing as well. So we have not observed anything out of the ordinary for the homes that we, that we sampled. And as I said, we sampled at homes where people had complained. And if you look at the table as well, you can see the raw water manganese levels. And you can see how it fluctuates greatly in the July and August dates. In some cases, it's six hundred, seven hundred micrograms per liter and then it drops to less than a hundred and then it goes back up again. So these are numbers that the operators have to test for when they, when they're at the plant. And then they have to determine how much of the potassium permanganate or chlorine dioxide in the past, how much of that to use in order to adequately remove the manganese. And when you see the river water concentrations change dramatically from day to day, it's difficult for the operators to sometimes keep up with how much, how much oxidant they need to use. And that's why in some cases, if the operator had it set for low levels coming in and then over the weekend it changed and the operator missed it, we may have situations where unfortunately inadequate removal of manganese. we may have situations where unfortunately inadequate removal of manganese took place. And that's when the community ends up with a little bit of tinged water until the operator adjusts the the chemicals needed. So those are the challenges that we have with trying to treat water from the Blue River, especially in the summertime. And as you can see, we also measured the water at Telesfor, at the blow off, which is at the very far end of town. And and the numbers that you see at that blow off and the numbers you see leaving the plant are are very close. And they're well below that twenty micrograms per liter objective. I reviewed the most of the complaints location. And as I expected, the dirty water is mostly taking place in the west end of Burner. So the most, most of the problems seem to be taking place on Cartier and on Principal and on Piet in that general vicinity. And it's the phenomena I tell it, I suspect, is that particulates of manganese, although they're in low concentrations leaving the plant, when they hit the water main, the velocity or the speed of the water flow is allowing the particulates that are carried out to settle out. And over time, they it concentrates in certain areas within the distribution. And unfortunately, in some homes, they're feeling it worse than others. But the recommendation to that we keep telling them is to flush your water for a couple of minutes and it clears. And and again, that's why the municipality, we also flush our mains twice a year. We do a main flush of the entire town twice a year to try and prevent a significant accumulation of manganese in the mains. So the municipality cleans the mains. And we ask that the homeowners clean their side by flushing their lines when they experience that dirty water situation. If the if they if it doesn't clear within a couple of minutes, that's suggesting to us, that's suggesting to us that there might be a problem within the main and not at the service line. And if we and that again, that's also why we ask homeowners, if you are experiencing dirty water that doesn't clear, give us a call. And then if we're starting to see three or four homes all calling at the same time because they're experiencing it, then we know that the problem is in the is most likely in the mains and not in the service line. But if that somebody at one house has dirty water and his neighbor does not, that's suggesting to me that the problem is on the property and not on the mains. So that's a bit of history that I can share with you. I don't know if there's any questions I can I can answer.
Good, thank you, Mr. Main. Okay, I'll open it up to the floor. Monsieur Consigliere Le Merveille.
Hey, you, Monsieur Chair. So the manganese, what would you suggest that the resident could do in their home to try to alleviate that problem? Is there a filter that they could set up on their on their line? Because there's there's a couple of factors. If you have a hot water tank that holds forty gallon in your home, and you have some manganese sediment that in your in your tank, then it becomes, because the the picture that I see on the internet is mostly they run the bathtub. That's telling me they're running the hot water. So it could be that it's sediment that was there in the bottom of the tank and it reactivated when they opened that tap. So is there anything that we could, the resident could do to charcoal the filter? Would that work or?
There are filters on the market that that they can contact the plumber to find out if that's.
It's coloring out of that water, yeah.
I can't speak to any particular home because each one would be unique.
Flushing tanks?
You can flush your tanks if there's an accumulation. But then that's one of the things that we ask the homeowners. Is the dirty water you're experiencing in the hot water line only? Or is it in the cold water line? And that's why we ask, please run your cold water line to see if it's dirty. If your cold water line is dirty, then it might be an issue with our with what we have in the area. But if it's just coming out of your hot water line, then it's suggesting it's probably a buildup in your hot water tank. The other thing is that the water in Burner is slightly corrosive. And homes that may have galvanized piping would be more subject to corrosion and accumulation of manganese. And so some, again, that's why certain homes may have worse, worse conditions than others. But if by running that line for a few minutes clears, again, it's telling, it's suggesting to me that it was just a small buildup that occurred, especially if you're not using your line. As a lot of complaints we receive are people that were away for the weekend. And then when they come back and they turn their water on, they expect it to be clear right away. But unfortunately, that's not the water quality that's in Burner. It's the phenomena is you've got manganese and it settles and it it builds up in certain pipes.
Fine, I have a follow up. When you do flood the line, do you just open it up for water to to get out of the pipe? Do you use a system like the we used to use on pipeline, a pig? It's it's a device?
Last, last year, we actually on Cartier ran ran sponge, they call it, they sponge it.
We call it a pig, okay.
So they they we they've done that also on another road. But so last year, we're having a problem. Unfortunately, we didn't have Mr. Main's services. So we worked with Aqua, myself and Al Correll. And so we sponged the line. So that was done very recently. And I believe there was one done near the water tower this year as well. We're on the other side of the highway, right?
No, it was done on Principal from the highway, Cartier.
All right.
And then last year, it was done on Cartier and a small section of Principal.
Yeah, so it is something we're starting, starting to do now, yeah.
Okay, so it's not, i- if there's something, it's new. It's not old sediment that's in, if you use that.
So we, as I said, we flushed yearly, twice a year. And we do remove a significant amount of manganese that have settled. But that plant's been running for fifty years. So this was the first time using the the pigging method. There's a proper term, I can't remember what it is right. But yeah, that's where we use.
A sponge.
The sponge to scour the, to better scour the the pipe. And it did remove a significant amount of debris that that had settled.
Understandable with a fifty year system, yeah. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
So just following with this, your second swabbing, you mentioned that.
Thank you. Swabbing is a true.
There was still some debris in it.
There was still some debris, but it did have a fair amount on the first couple swabs. But it cleared up much quicker the second time around. But also, we did further along Spal. So there was more that was cleared that was further away from the water plant.
Go for Gagné.
Yeah, just have a question, Mr. Main. When you did, when you do the flushing, do you notice there's like more complaints of manganese going into the houses? Because you are actually kind of fluffing that sediment up.
Yes, we do get complaints, but we inform the the people here that receive those complaints to advise them that we are flushing and just to run your cold water. So in those conditions, we know we're causing it. And in those conditions, we ask for people to be patient and to.
Because we have the same issue even here in town when we do the flushing in town.
And what?
We get notices that you need to run our water.
Yes, they get the same notices. And and the operators, when they flush, they don't stop flushing. Once they start flushing, we don't stop flushing till it's clear.
Okay, okay, perfect, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I seem to recall at one time, there were some looping issues in different areas where we had some dead ends within our water system. Have have those issues in the distribution system been addressed at this point?
They've not been, well, we've never, we we cannot undo any dead ends. In general, if there's new constructions taking place, we will, we will avoid having dead ends. And we make sure that there's a kind of a loop or continuous flow of water to be considered when something new is constructed. We do have dead ends in Burner. And when we flush, we we know to flush the dead ends. There's a, there's a priority to get the dead ends cleared.
Okay, thank you. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I have one more question. When I'm looking at the table of the manganese concentrations, there are instances, for example, July fifteenth, where the readings at the water plant are actually higher than what's being read at the at the blow off point on the same day. So say on July fifteenth, it's twenty four to eleven. Is there, and there's other instances down the line that are the same. Is there an explanation for why the reading would be lower at the end? Like, so the water, water at the plant is coming out with a certain reading. And then by the time you actually do the reading at the blow off, it's reduced.
Within, within the the equipment and the amounts that we're measuring, they're insignificantly different. Not there, there's no significant difference with those numbers. And secondly, that's what was measured on that particular day. And what was leaving the plant, the the conditions that's going out of Telesfor, it's dynamic. It could be water that was coming from the water tower. Or it could be water that that was coming from the plant on that day. And it also takes several hours for water to to move from the plant to that location. So they're not occurring at the same time. It's not the same.
So the water, when you're sampling at Telesfor, is water that could have come out of the plant four, five, six hours earlier in the water? It could be different.
Yes.
I just, I just wondered why that.
And so that's why the number that's more important to me is the average over the summer. So when you look at the seventeen versus the twenty one, it's suggesting to me that the chemicals that we're using is keeping things in suspension the way we would like it.
Thank you.
And so then there's one thing that I did not highlight. The one for one double, and I'm gonna, I'm highlighting it now. The homeowner asked the operator at that time, do not flush the line, just take it right away. And when he did that, that reading of one twenty four that you see there is a result of being asked to just sample it without flushing. So that's just, that was just an indicator of if you don't run the water, it's sometimes it's high.
Any other questions? Yes, Consigliere Ferra.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Thank you for this report. I found it very useful. And thank you for your time last week also. Because it was very helpful for me to understand the problem. Is it, is it possible then? As you, as you point out, the water seems to be leaving the plant clear. But then we have all these readings in people's homes. Is it possible, and then the blow off seems clear. Is it possible that, and I think you touched upon it, but is it picking up manganese on the way, getting into people's homes? But somehow, the blow off is still clear?
What I believe is taking place is, as I, as I mentioned, there's still particulates of manganese that's leaving the plants, that's leaving the plant. And where the velocity or speed of the water traveling through the pipe is slow, it's allowing some of these particulates to settle out and accumulate. Water mains, unlike sanitary mains, may not necessarily be be straight and flat. There may be some ups and downs. And if you, although the water's under higher pressure in order to move it from the plant to the homes, it's the velocity of the flow through the pipe. So even though the pressure is high, the speed of the water flowing through the pipe may not be, is not that fast. And so if there are sections of lower, I'm hypothesizing that, if there are sections of of low dips within the mains, it would be a a a location where the particulates that are settling out may be accumulating. And that's why in some cases, one neighbor is getting dirtier water than the other. Because unfortunately, that's where the particulates are accumulating. So it's so, so it's, and again, it's just small amounts. Because we're looking at small flows through a home, through a person's service line and not the vast amount of flow that's leaving the plant. And by the time it gets to Telesfor, the numbers are roughly the same concentration. But the number of manganese that's precipitating out or settling out, it is not a significant loss throughout the distribution before it gets to Telesfor.
And also, one thing I'm wondering is, you, if the water is arriving in people's homes clear but has a certain amount of dissolved manganese, which I understand is not really visible, is it possible that there occurs some kind of chemical reaction with, say, laundry detergent that then results in stained whites?
pH has a bearing on what is dissolved and what is soluble and insoluble. I don't know if the laundry process is lowering your pH. If you raise your pH, it will be tend to make it more soluble. I don't, I'm not familiar with the chemistry is taking place when you wipe, when you do your laundry. But our efforts are to oxidize the manganese at the plant so that they're in particulate form. And then we can settle it, filter it out, settle it out. So what we're trying to do is put manganese into the distribution in particulate forms. But if there's a section where you lower your pH, then it may become insoluble. It may become soluble again. But I'm not, I cannot, I cannot comment on the chemistry when you do your laundry. I don't. The phenomenon is people are getting dirty laundry, so I cannot argue against what's happening. Sorry, yes, the temperature is another factor. But I don't think there's a significant, no, you're talking with hot water tank. We're mixing it with hot water.
So they're doing their laundry in hot water, that could be a larger contributor than.
Okay, then laundry detergent.
Yeah, oh, I mean, we can't speak to laundry detergent.
Yeah, yeah, okay. But temperature could be a factor.
The hot water is impacting it.
All right. And I, I mean, I spoke to a local plumber in Verder. He has a lot of experience with this. And he has installed a filter system with good success in a, in a brand new home. And but he has commented that he's having to change his filters more often than he originally thought because his filters are extremely dirty. So that's, you know, the, that's the first point at which the water comes into the home is through the filtering system. So he's still seeing a very high level of filter dirt. And the other point I wanted to raise is you mentioned the imperfect nature of the dosing, where there's, there's gonna be a delay between the time that we realize that the manganese levels have gone up before the correct dose is put in. And so there's a chance sometimes that manganese will come out into the system. Could we not have some kind of alert system just to warn people that this may have happened?
We we do notify people if there is a situation that the operators would contact me that we were, that we may have had some discolored water going to the distribution. And then I would contact the attendants that receive calls to be aware that you may have an increase in people, people have experiencing dirty water. And so that notification does go out to the community if they call us in.
How does it go out?
If, well, we tell, we ask people, if you experience dirty water, please contact and let us know.
Yeah.
And and if, and if I get the information from the operators that there may have been dirty water going out into the distribution for the. for the last couple of hours, but it's been corrected. So there may be a slug of discolored water going out, and it may or may not affect people, homeowners, or it may have settled out in the piping and not be experienced by anyone at all. But should anybody call, we have, we'll be able to advise them that, yes, we're aware and we had a few hours of discolored water going into the community. So that alert is there if people were to call us in. But we do not go out and advertise to the community, "Oops, we have dirty water for the last two hours."
Well, the other note with that is you might not even see a discoloration in those incidences. So it's something that you want to be... Sorry?
I think it's something that we, you know, logically, it's something that we can have a look at for occasions where we think it's extreme, like 100 to 600 or whatever. Certainly, we can have a discussion with the communications people and with them to see at what point do we trigger those type of things and not. But I think that we'd have to give it a little bit more look right now. So, but it's not a, it's not a bad point. I just want to have a chat with the staff to see, based on what I heard as well, with respect to the high variations of raw water, manganese, and perhaps the delay, whether there is a metric that would kick in, that would force us to basically proactively communicate versus reactively, be ready for the call. So it's a good point, but I think we probably have to look at it a little further and get back to it.
I'd be very interested to see how we could do that. And I think if we do it, it would have to be on a kind of a push notification system rather than a passive, you know. I don't think it would be useful to, let's say, post something on the website, because people don't kind of look at the website before they do their laundry. But, you know, we have technology now with just simply email and social media to push an instant notice to people and say, you know, "It might happen, so be careful." And I think that's probably something people would appreciate.
I think they would, to the point where they're pretty sure that it's enough that it could be an issue. If it's, if we don't get that right, we could pee and cry wolf at two and, you know.
I understand.
So it's to find that balance, you know, and then the right method of communication. And perhaps, you know, not, you know, again, it's an operations discussion, but perhaps looking at certain key hotspot areas as well and not, you know, and having a direct contact with certain people that you may feel will be more affected than others. So it's one of those things we all have to factor in and have a discussion to see if we can do a better job with the communications part. But they certainly, when they have that, do inform everybody up here, get ready. If we get some phone calls, this is what's happened, blah, blah. So, but that's, you know, maybe a little late if somebody's washing whites.
And sorry, one more thing. If you pay attention to the table that I provided, those are not day-to-day. You notice they're, it's not, there are many days in between where samples are not recorded. They weren't, we're not measuring it. So it, in the case where you see it go from 200 to 81, like, that's one sudden drop. But if you look at the other numbers around there, like, you can see that the trend from July 11th to July 25th, it's, there are days missing in between, but it shows that the numbers have gone up and then it comes down again. And so the operators, when they're there day-to-day, they will see it doing this, and they make it adjust accordingly. But it's when they end up with a situation where it just suddenly shoots up, a weather condition, it rained or there's a storm that really affected the turbulence of the water source that they weren't expecting. Those are the things that, we end up with those situations where the operator didn't anticipate a sudden increase like that.
Yes, Chair?
Yep.
I feel that, having now kind of looked at this matter a lot in the last month, I feel that there's a gap in the knowledge and understanding between the people who are affected by this and the municipality. And I think I would suggest at this stage that perhaps we should think about having another public meeting so that I think people need to understand the problem better, because it's not, you know, it's not an easy fix. And I think the more the people understand what the problem is and the challenges we have, and better understand we have from them. But I think we, as a municipality, also need to listen to them and hear their stories and hear their experience. So we have a better understanding of, you know, how the problem is affecting them. And I think it would be very helpful for us and for the people of the community to do that. And the other thing, and I mentioned this the last time we discussed it, I don't see why we can't consider having some kind of pilot project with a filtering system for a very limited number of homes to see if it helps and if it resolves the problem for these homes. I think we could do that for probably, speaking to a local plumber in Verner, for between $500,000 and $1,000,000 per home. And if we limit this to, you know, 15 or 20 homes and see what, you know, what progress we do with that, I think it's a temporary solution we have to consider, because we know that the long-term solution is a, you know, a 10, 12, what, $15 million pipeline from Cache Bay. And we know that, you know, $12 million is not going to fall from the sky tomorrow. So I think it's something we could do for relatively little amount of money. If you divide it by how many water users there are, 1,300, $15 per person.
Yes, Mr. Rambo?
Through you, Mr. Chair. On the second point, you know, we'd have to have a close look at that, because that could kind of get out of control a little bit on liability and admission. And I don't want to go there, but certainly we could look at some options, because obviously, even the few folks that are being severely affected, you know, that's not acceptable. With respect to public communication, certainly if that's council's wish, my recommendation would be probably in April or so, about a couple of months ahead of the year, so it's fresh in their mind, and having maybe a community meeting at that time. So in the interim, we'll have a discussion about, you know, what our processes are and what we can and can't do now and have a look. As a, you know, I've been here almost a little longer than Peter, so I...
Same as me.
I participated with this history. And I do hear it at the golf course in the morning. So, yeah, I think that, you know, we can start having a look at, you know, getting, you know, right down into the weeds with certain serious ones to find out if it's hot water. Just, you know, have you, what are you doing about your hot water tank? And is there something? And really get down to the meat of it. Because in our experience, it hasn't been as many residences, probably six or seven this year.
Yeah, about that.
So, you know, there's, I think, 300 and some on the system. So it is a very targeted issue that we should be able to find something. But, yeah, to your point, we'll have a look at it. And certainly with a public meeting, we'll take that under advisement and bring that back to council in the new year to do that. Certainly, the way Peter speaks, you know, gives everybody an appreciation for how complex and technical it is to provide water all over. And manganese isn't, you know, isolated to Verner, Sudbury. Their main water plant in Ramsey Lake has had manganese issues as well. So it's not, it's not, you know, it's something that's affecting a lot. You know, we have to just kind of figure it out. But eventually, if we could find a solution, you know, the Veve River is not, it's not a great water source compared to other water sources. So if we can have that resolved, that would go a long way.
Thank you, Mr. Rambo. You done, Mr. Fetter?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think our long-term solution is, we all know, Minister of Infrastructure delegation at Avery, Roma, Obro, Amo, attention, tried to get some funds. Two years ago, it was $10 million. Now I hear $12 million. So we have to keep asking Minister for funds to do this project. We can't put it on the back of the users right now, the astronomical tax. So we need to have the help of the provincial government. That's where we need to emphasize. We need to go there, get the funds. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor?
You know, I think that's an excellent idea, and we will continue to pursue. We did do a delegation just in April, and the provincial government's mandate right now is housing, as we've talked about before. But maybe there are some other angles that we can take, you know, as far as whether it's Ministry of Infrastructure, whether we go, you know, through, you know, another kind of angle on that. Speaking to the communications, I think that there is actually a larger discussion to be had in regards to modernizing some of the communications tools that we use for a lot of different aspects, and whether that's allowing people to sign up for SMS messaging and choose, you know, are you interested in Public Works updates, where we could send out updates on project start times and what's going on here, or water issues or different issues. And I think that that's a discussion that we can have during our budget deliberations this year, because my understanding is that there are still some modernization funds available that would be well-used, I think, in, you know, either through communications or service request system. And that might be a discussion that we can ask the staff to come back with some options on, you know, what might be a good use for the remaining modernization funds, because I think that we've all heard through constituents and residents, you know, some issues around, you know, general communications and how effective they are at really reaching people. You know, only a certain amount of people have Facebook. Only a certain amount of people are on the municipal website. So are there different channels and different means? And so I think that's a discussion that we can have during our budget deliberations this year. And then I'd also just like to speak as far as, I had one question is in regards to the CPR corridor. Where are we with the negotiations with CPR? Do we have an agreement in principle?
Yes, we have an agreement in principle.
In principle, yeah.
Yes, so we have to...
Finalize it. There is... In their draft, there is a requirement for payment and the amount and how it grows, to which I advise we renegotiate that portion. But except, other than that, the rest of the agreement seems satisfactory.
Okay, so that fee would be an ongoing, say, annual fee for use of that land for that purpose? And at this point, staff feels that the price that they're asking is a little, a little too high for what we'd be comfortable with. But in principle, we would have permission to use the land if we can negotiate the specific terms of the compensation.
You know, at this council, we've never had the discussion on the different options, because that was something that was discussed during the last term of council. I've read through the ACON report, and, you know, I don't know that you all agree with it, but when I looked at the options that were presented, you know, continuing to do a massive upgrade or rebuild on a water plant that will still have some of the dirtiest source water in all of Ontario, doesn't make sense to build a new facility at Cache Lake when there are certain barriers to that option. Doesn't make sense, and doing nothing is no option. So, you know, I would assume, and I don't know whether we should bring it back to have kind of official word from this council that we believe that the solution is the 16-kilometer pipeline from the Sturgeon River Plant. It would make me feel more comfortable having that agreement of all of you when we are looking to delegate and when we are looking to solutions that this is something that our council also agrees to make. It was a decision that was made by a former term. So, you know, I don't know if that's something that can be brought back to council just as a, as a, this is what we support and we believe is the right idea, and then I move forward with that. But, you know, what Councilor Larrabee said is correct. You know, $15 million spread over the user group of the water system, even if you include the Sturgeon households, is a very, very high cost per household project without appropriate funding. And that is something that would be borne by the users of the water system. And it is up to us to try to find, find the investment from the province or the federal government to help mitigate the impact. And we all know that with the Sturgeon upgrades, Sturgeon water upgrades that were done over the last several years, there was a big hit on water users at that time. And I don't think that our users want to see another, you know, doubling of their water bills. So, you know, if we could bring that back to council for an agreement and we know that this is what we're working towards, that would, I think, be a very good first step.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other questions? Yes, Councilor Rambo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering, like, in terms of the communication standard that we maybe be looking for this, is there any correlation with, like, heavy rainfall? Or, because I tried to look up some historical data, and it looks like start of August, there was a heat wave. The numbers are way down. And then I also noticed at the start of July, numbers were very high, pretty much middle chunk of July. And I can find, see if those numbers are at that time. But is there something like that? And then at least people also with that type of education, they kind of get a little more aware that if we're getting 40 millimeters of rain within two days...
The precipitation in the summer is not as strong of a fact... Well, it's not a direct factor. The thing is, is that if it rains, the demand is lower, and people use less water. And if there's less water being used, then it's easier, it's less hardship on the water plant. So it's easier for the system to produce particulates, because the flow rate into the plant is lower, and therefore we can be more efficient with manganese removal. So that's why, if there's rain, the general, the general trend is less water being used by the community.
Yeah, I was wondering if with the rain, like, that raw number spikes up. So even though the use would be lower, the...
Use is lower, so the...
High, so it's harder to clean at that point.
When the, when the use is lower, the flow rate into the plant is lower, it's easier to remove the particulates. In the heat waves situation, people are using lots of water, and we are at the max with the rate of waters coming in, and the efficiency of manganese removal is less.
Thank you. Just one more. Thanks for the information that was really helpful there, you know, your chemistry. But I was just wondering, and like, this doesn't really have to do with the Verner water, but just the map that we were provided had the names and phone numbers. Is that normal, or should we remove that from the public document? I'm just trying to help give some...
That was a memo.
Samples, I just noticed that, and I think I'll remove that.
I didn't realize the names were on there.
Yeah, probably it was missed, thanks.
Yep.
But thank you very much for the report. It was very good.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions? Oh, Councilor Estor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not to prolong this very much, but I just wanted to agree in general with the new process or looking at the process of information sharing that we can have with residents in Verner. And also, I agree with the meetings. I think it was a very thorough and good discussion that we had tonight on the history and how things work and why things are the way they are and what the municipalities... things work and why things are the way they are and what the municipality is doing, uh, you know, to the most of our extent in terms of trying to rectify this situation. Sometimes nature just doesn't cooperate and, and it's not through lack of effort. But I also just wanted to say that I agree with kind of getting this on the front burner. Uh, there's been some work in the past. There's been this report that we looked at this evening. And, you know, through delegations is great and definitely push through that, but also to see what we can do to maybe make a little bit of noise, uh, with our federal and provincial partners to, to see if we're able to drum up some support for this and fiscally, obviously. Uh, but to keep this moving forward because it's not getting better over time. Uh, challenges are, seem to be getting a little bit more as we move forward. So the more that we can do, as much as we can do to make this an issue, uh, you know, meeting at delegations or, or one-off meetings with, uh, you know, federal provincial reps or politicians in the area and try and drum up some, some awareness here. I know we're doing that on some of the other files as well. Uh, mayor and I met with, uh, with our MPP and MP on the hospital issue not too far long ago. And if we can continue that with this, I think, you know, for the residents in Burner, we really have to, to make a push on this. Um, and, and I'll, um, you know, share that it's been on the agenda even from my previous term on council. And it's not going away. And I, I think if we can make some significant strides or do the best we can to try and make some significant strides, uh, to raise this issue. I know some of the other, uh, towns and cities in the province are in a similar situation and they're pushing as well. So, uh, it wouldn't hurt. I know we have another big project with the bridge, uh, Champlain Bridge as well. So, um, there's big, big ticket items on a couple of different fronts, but I think the more we can push our federal provincial partners, uh, to get them to the table to try and resolve this issue and get a, you know, no pun intended, clean, uh, you know, clean, um, approach and forward motion on this would be excellent. Uh, so I just wanted to share that. I, I think there's lots of great ideas around the table tonight and I think we're all of like minds in terms of wanting to move this issue forward. So thank you for that.
Thank you, councillor Restor. Any other questions? Sir Larrabee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the mayor had a, a great idea is to bring us, bring the subject back so we're all on the same page. So when we go tackle this with the minister, we're, we're, uh, confronting it as a team. So that's a great idea. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, on that note, uh, all good idea. I'd like, I like the idea, Mr. Pan, to have, uh, maybe, uh, as a pilot project, uh, having a few houses with the filter system. Because I know who he's talking about in Burner, they built a new house in 2022. They, he put that, uh, filter system. You see the text pipe going in, it's a plastic pipe. It's now almost black. It's got the filter system. On the other side, it's still white. So the filter is working. Uh, people are ruining clothes, uh, their appliances, I'm sure, are losing a lot of life. So I think it would be a very cheap, um, short-term, uh, solution. And we should try a, a pilot project like Mr. Pan was saying. That's, it, it, it would be really cheap compared to everything else that's, that's costing it as well. And it would save those people. I can just, I'm on a private twelve, so but I can only imagine what they're going through. You never know when it's going. Like Mr. Ming was saying, you might flush your, your line and the, the yellow might be coming over there just as you're doing your wash. And for the, to say that it's the hot water tank, a few of them, uh, has got hot water on demand. So this theory is out the door. You know, there's no reservoir. So I'll leave it at that. Yes, councillor Larrabee?
Thank you. Uh, could I, could I know how many resident have, uh, are under the supply, Burner supply?
There's 328 residents.
So this is what we're looking at? 320 resident that would want that filter?
No, no. A lot of people are not affected. Like, like Mr. Ming was saying, there is dips in the pipes. So you, you never know. I talked to so many people and the majority are not affected at all. Some of them don't understand why him, but they don't understand what's happening.
As I mentioned to councillor Pan, I think it's something that we have to have a look at from a variety of different angles. And we certainly will have those discussions and get back to you. When we get back to you, you know, we're, we're being pushed right now with budget and a few other things, but certainly it's on our radar as is a public meeting and as is, uh, bringing this back probably, uh, in a month's time, uh, to revisit the auctions is very easy because the analysis has been done. But we'll keep this on the, uh, on the front burner.
Okay. That's it. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, uh, we will do a motion for a brief 10-minute recess. I'll take a mover in a second here, please. Councillor Larrabee, on your very first one. Congratulations and councillor Sainte-Lie.
It is moved by councillor Larrabee and seconded by councillor Sainte-Lie. At approximately 8:21 PM, a motion was tabled for a 10-minute recess.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Hey, good evening and welcome back. We're just returning from our brief recess. We have completed the committee of the whole portion of the agenda, so we will move to the regular meeting, 6.1. Madam Clerk?
It is moved by Counsel Gagne and seconded by Counsel Panay. Be it resolved that consent agenda for the council and committee of the whole meeting held on September 17th be presented.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Carrie?
Thank you.
Okay, on to 6.2, planning.
It is moved by Counsel Panay and seconded by Counsel Gagne. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202471, being a bylaw of the West Nipissing Municipality, to rezone certain lands located at 37 Pine from Shoreline Residential to Shoreline Residential Exception Zone 21 shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Any questions or comments on that? All in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Counsel Gagne and seconded by Counsel Panay. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202472, being a temporary use zoning bylaw to amend zoning bylaw 201445, to authorize the temporary use of certain lands located at 178 Craig Street shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Questions or comments? None? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have no correspondence, so one finished business and the next resolution, please.
It is moved by Counsel Panay and seconded by Counsel Gagne. Whereas council received a request from Pride in the Woods seeking two letters of support for funding and grant applications, be it resolved that council authorizes the municipality of West Nipissing to issue two letters of support to Pride in the Woods for funding applications to the New Horizons Senior Programming Grant and the Canadian Heritage Grant.
Okay, questions or comments? None? All those in favor?
Oh, sorry, ma'am.
Okay, yes, Counsel Gagne.
Madam Mayor, I just have a question. I saw that the name on the applicant for Pride in the Woods is Ryan. Can't remember his last name. And is Ryan Jackson owns the camp?
That's correct.
Where Pride in the Woods takes care of?
That's correct, so he owns the venue.
He owns the venue and he's applying for Pride of the Wood as a non-for-profit organizer or president?
I believe that, I believe that Pride in the Woods is a non-for-profit organization and Mr. Jackson sits on the board of that organization as well as being the venue.
So is there a conflict or something? Like you own the venue and you run a non-for-profit and now you're applying for grants to kind of help organize activity and fund your private business? I know, I just find it a bit fishy. I'm not comfortable with this request. I would, I would like more detail if that's possible. I don't know if anybody like has a question.
Just on the face of it, I don't know that it's a conflict for a landowner who uses portions of that land and sits on a board. If the funds are directed for the purpose for which the application is provided, if the funds are provided to prop up something that's not for profit, then certainly that might, that's obviously a conflict and a violation of what grants he would be applying for. But if it's Pride in the Woods that is applying for it for a very specific purpose, I haven't read the detail. But that, you know, that's not conflict. I'm not suggesting how counsel should look at it. Just so that you know.
Yeah, Counsel Restool?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had similar concerns to Counsel Gagne and in addition as well, when we did receive the delegation, had the discussion at council, you know, several weeks ago or a month ago, I had some concerns where questions came about the event and the response that was given was that it was a private event unless I'm mistaken. I thought that was the response that the individual gave when there was concerns raised about the activity itself. And that's another layer for me where I have trouble supporting this, where we're going to be granting letters that'll be used to access provincial dollars to support private events. I'm not comfortable with that part either in addition to the comments that Counsel Gagne shared.
Any other questions? Counsel Gagne?
Thank you. So just a follow, what I would recommend is if we can get the details in regards to the Pride of the Woods as a non-for-profit, get that information first. And then maybe once we have that information to see like who's part of that board and exactly how they're registered and so on, if we can maybe bring that back at a later meeting and maybe look at this request, that would be my ask.
I would need a motion to defer and a secondary on a motion to defer. Counsel Gagne?
I would like the motion to defer, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is that a second, Counsel Restool? Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion to defer on the table. All those in favor of deferring this?
Can I comment? Sorry, ma'am. Can I comment on the motion to defer?
Yes.
I'm not, I would not be in favor of motion to defer. I think I've made my decision already and I don't need further information. I feel uncomfortable with the whole thing for the reasons I stated at the last, the last time they appeared. I feel uncomfortable for the reasons that Counsel Gagne just raised there. And I feel uncomfortable after receiving the follow-up letter, which I thought contained some very inappropriate language. So I'd be against the motion to defer and I would probably opt to vote now on the request.
Thank you. Okay, so there is a motion to defer on the table. Any further questions or comments on the deferral itself? Okay, seeing none, a motion to defer on the table. All those in favor? That is defeated. So we're back to the resolution for the original letter of support. And any further questions or comments on the, on the contents of the request for support? Counsel Nichol?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also echo everything Counsel Fran said. We can't support it for all of those reasons and I'm still beyond disturbed by the grossly inappropriate email and the way he spoke to us, so it's a no for me.
Okay, no further questions or comments to vote on the original motion? All those in favor? That is defeated. Thank you. We do have the addendum for this evening's meeting. There are two items on the addendum. The first is the, the first is the council and committee reassignments. So with that, we are welcoming a new member to our pool, which did necessitate a couple of shifts in council assignments. You'll see attachment to that addendum. There are three members who are affected, of course, Counsel Larrabee instead of receiving new assignments. Counsel St. Louis will move from Chair of Emergency Measures to Chair of Planning as he's been active on the Planning and Committee of Adjustment, Planning Advisory Committee and Committees of Adjustments since the beginning of the term. And Counsel Restool has, will be shifted out of the Chateau and non-for-profit housing to make room for Counsel Larrabee to take part in those and will instead take on doctor recruitment, which fits in with his other portfolio pieces and his role at the hospital. Questions or comments on those reassignments? Pardon me? Oh, sorry, Madam Clerk will read the resolution. Thank you.
It is moved by Counsel Gagne and seconded by Counsel Panay. Whereas at the meeting on September the 12th, 2024, council enacted bylaw number 202469, appointing Roland Larrabee as council for Ward 6. And whereas council deems it necessary to update the board and committee assignments for the remainder of the 2220, 2022-2026 council term, be it resolved that the revisions to the boards and committee assignments for councils members for the term 2022-2026 be accepted as presented.
Okay. Questions or comments on that? Counsel Rebar?
Is this document that we provided, is that like what we're voting on this exactly? This way? Okay, so I'm missing the active undermined.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we will make sure that that update is included because of course you have been involved on that committee for quite some time now. My apologies for missing that. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so with the, with the adjustment, we don't need a different resolution for that. So with that, minor correction from Counsel Rebar, the resolution's on the floor. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Counsel Nichol and seconded by Counsel Rebar. Whereas council has received a fee waiver request from Les Compagnons de Franck Loisir seeking the free use of the Marcel Noel Hall in order to host a musical performance event for local schools, be it resolved that pursuant to policy number 2024137 discretionary grant, council hereby authorizes the fees to be waived for the use of the Marcel Noel Hall by Les Compagnons de Franck Loisir on Wednesday, September 25th, 2024, as requested.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, that is the end of our agenda and the formal part of our agenda. I will just give a quick update. I guess the, the one activity that I participated in since, since we last met was a, did I mention that? I attended a, no, I did not, sorry. I attended a summit in Timmins, a national summit on the impacts of substance use within small and mid-sized communities, and it was an entirely fascinating and thought-provoking couple of days that I spent in Timmins. I had my first opportunity to participate as a panelist, which was kind of exciting and nerve-wracking at the same time. I'm talking about what we see in our, in our community of our size, but it was also interesting because there were so many different perspectives that were represented there. There were chiefs of police from left for the GPEI and there were chief paramedic services. There were representatives from the Canadian Mental Health Association. There were representatives from various not-for-profits that both support users but also support families who are dealing with the impacts of substance use. And I really took away a lot of information and a lot of perspective. I have prepared notes and have been in contact with some of our local community partners, including the hospital, the Alliance Centre, the Horizon Women's Centre, and we do plan on meeting within the next couple of weeks just to go over some of my experience and the community health centre and how, how we can use some of those, those learnings within our community. But I will say that one thing that was talked about a lot was the benefit of resilient communities, and I really believe in the work that this council has undertaken as far as participation with the Icelandic model, primary prevention model with Planet Youth, the development of a youth advisory committee and some of the other actions that we're taking to try to, to build community and build youth, strong youth within our community as one of the things that we can do. So I just wanted to share that experience with my members of council and with, with the public, and it was, it really was quite an intense couple of days of really good sessions. And with that, I will, we will proceed into closed session.
It is moved by Counsel Rebar and seconded by Counsel Nichol. Pursuant, may it be resolved that pursuant to section 239 of the municipal act that we proceed into closed meeting to discuss the following, the security of the property of a municipality or local board who proposed repending acquisition or disposition of land and scientific, technical or commercial or financial information belonging to the municipality.
Okay. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you.